It's a whole policy to move business. They are, they're supposed to start ours as an ordinance. You know, you don't pay attention for our annual checkups.
Okay, no.
That was, that was a little scary.
Yeah.
It's nine thirty-one on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, let's call the finance business meeting in order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Ossman?
Here.
Commissioner Sangster?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Eustace?
Here.
Commissioner Clermont?
Here.
Commissioner Wallace?
Here.
Commissioner Warfield?
Here.
Thanks, we're all here, seven and all today. Please stand for the invocation. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us to the A, as we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Chaboyden County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf, for the good of all, as we pray in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And A, for that you pledge your allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Need to add to the agenda, we're gonna add J down under new business. The strategic fund grant regarding the generator. That's under J, under new business, twelve J. Okay, how about a motion to approve the agenda's amendment?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. See, part, thank you, Dan. Will be supported, no bomb, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, board, that's carried seven and all. About a motion to approve the consent of the amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chair. Will be supported. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Thank you, that's carried seven and all. We're down to brief citizens' comments, three minutes, if you'd like to address the board, please call up the podium, say your name. Right behind you, Louis.
You vote.
You wanna go first, Louis?
Yep, Louis.
Good morning, commissioners, John Muller and the township. Uh, I got a very disturbing memo or email on Friday, because apparently the county is no longer supporting the blade ordinance. That will have serious impact on the county. Township just do not have the personnel or the authority to send out ticket rangers.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address that.
Please.
When you're dealing with blade ordinances or nuisance ordinances, the county does not have the legal authority to do that.
You, you under, you wrote the contract that we have with the county for enforcement.
Oh, so, so each individual township's got their own ordinance?
We, yeah, we, you approved the ordinance. Commissioner Clermont was instrumental in starting it. There's been a decision, apparently, recently, to no longer request charges.
Where was that made?
I believe the sheriff told the prosecutor they would no longer ask for charges on light.
Thank you.
We got a memo from the prosecutor's office administrator.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, from me, I was at Moletownship meeting last night, and they voted to enter into, and once again, Brian, that's correct, a township, uh, blank ordinance, so I, this is the first I've read of this.
First, anybody here to read it?
Sure.
Yeah. This came from a letter from the prosecutor's office, Mr. Moore? Hey, John, this came via a letter from, a mail from the prosecutor?
I got an email from Melanie Hansen. They were scheduled to have a meeting with our township next month, with deputies and prosecutors to talk about it. And sent me the email saying, cancel meeting.
So if I may ask one more question, Mr. Chair. Gil, you were instrumental in helping me put that together, weren't you? Wasn't the prosecutor and the sheriff supposed to be at your meeting tomorrow, or tonight, I mean?
Yeah, they canceled them, they are not gonna be there. They did cancel, but I did not know why. They, I never got the email, I just had John forward it to me, because my email address used to be through Sunrise and, and Onaway, who sold a spectrum, and they canceled all email, all the email stuff, so they would have sent mine to an email that doesn't exist. I had to get a new one when all of that took over, so I'm probably sure I got one, but I just seen this one just now, from John.
Okay, thank you, we take that under advisement, checking. Thank you.
Louis Follins, Grand Township, City of Chaboyden. Just questioning that, uh, that, uh, disaster grant we're supposed to be applying for. I just want a clarification, is that also gonna be, uh, including the, uh, drains on east side of Chaboyden too? The, uh, eastern drain and Sutherland drain, and the Butler drain? Like, get the clarification on that, and the second thing is, is on administrator's report. Uh, you wanna see what clarification we can get on? So, you plan scheduling to spend about one and a half watt per topic, one and a half minutes, one and a half hours, one and a half days, one and a half weeks, one and a half years, watt, you know? So, uh...
Probably years, Louis.
Huh?
Over years, yeah.
Okay, well, I just needed to, uh, get a clarification, this is one and a half watt per topic.
One and a half hours.
Huh?
One and a half hours.
Okay. All right, other than that, uh, I guess I'll keep a break.
Thank you, Louis, got anyone else? Thank you, let's move on, we, we have an award we have to present here. Not only do we have to, but we want you to. So, Brian, if you can, angle up to the podium there, we'll... Certificate of Appreciation, Best Retirement Wisher. The Chaboyden County Board of Commissioners proudly presents this certificate to Brian Brennan. An appreciation recognition of his twenty-two years of dedicated service as a contract civil council for the county of Chaboyden. Your knowledgeable counsel, trustworthy guidance, and professional experience have been instrumental in providing the Board of Commissioners legal guidance and information to develop and implement programs and policies that have benefited the citizens, visitors, and businesses of Chaboyden County. Thank you for your exemplary professionalism and enduring impact to the community. That's from this whole board and the whole county.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I wanna thank the board, I wanna thank Jeff, I wanna thank the county staff for all of the years of, of support that you guys have given us, it's truly been appreciated. Um, I've enjoyed coming up here, probably less so in the winter time, but you guys have been really great, you're one of my favorite clients, and I'm gonna miss not seeing you, you, uh, at least once a month, thank you, Dan.
Once you get bored, you can always come.
I, I'd like.
Yeah, there you go. Catherine might want that.
Yeah, I certainly would.
Just put on for her. Thank you.
I wanna recognize Brian, uh, worked with several attorneys in the past thirty-five years, and, uh, Brian's definitely been, uh, just one of the anchors of our organization, and, uh, he's kinda got that balance there between, he'll tell you how it is, but also let you figure it out at the same time, and also the, um, anytime we needed anything, he was always right there. So, we really appreciate it, and we'll miss ya, and congratulations on a great career.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll see you, see you around in the region there, and anytime you wanna stop in and say hello, or however that way, we'll, we'll say hello, so...
Thank you, thank you much.
I may pile on, Mr. Chair. I also, for twenty-two years, relied on Brian, and he would always accept my calls, always in a professional manner, and, uh, he, he's just a good friend, he would, he would tell me when I was screwing up, that's for sure, so...
I, I like to say, I talked him off the ledge a few times.
I would encourage. So, Brian, enjoy your retirement, pal, uh, well deserved, well deserved.
Real quick, public comment for the township ordinances, there's, the meeting for cancel, so there's no change in the contract, we're still enforcing, we're just not reconvening to revisit the contract, so that's another meeting, straight from Melissa Goodrich herself. So, I should put that to bed.
So, so... Thanks, Dean.
Yep.
Dean, if I, so, like I said, Moletownship last night, uh, they voted to...
Get into the...
Contact, so they're, it's still going to be?
Yep, so, when Molet contacted us, um, it was in the contract here to see if, what the pilot program looked like.
Yeah.
The sheriff, I wasn't here for it, I took that day off, um, they convened, there's gonna be no changes in the, how we do business with the township's ordinances, and this, I'm reading in verbatim, we are enforcing, we just aren't changing anything, so no need to meet, uh, same contract, continue, no worries. That's straight from Melissa Goodrich, so, although it's entering into the same contract that was originally the pilot program.
Are you okay with that, John?
Yeah, man, I, I'm confused, because the memo I got said the sheriff will not be asking for charges.
Yeah.
I, that I couldn't talk to be too, but there's...
So that still has to be...
Yeah, if it's still going, that's great.
Thanks, Dean.
Yep.
We're down to the finance directors' reports, boards, it's ninety-seven, one hundred and two, and one hundred and four. Long report.
Yep, um, we're looking at, um, March, which means we're through the first quarter of the year, which is where the fun began, right? With the ice room. Uh, revenues of March thirty-one to twenty-five, one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars, thirty-five cents. Nine point three percent of the budget, compared to a year prior, one million, two hundred eighty thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars, twenty-five cents, or eight point five cent, eight point five seven percent of the budget. It's an increase of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars and ten cents. Uh, revenues that were changing, uh, variance is over twenty-five thousand between the years, um, just one of them, a one-on-one, four hundred six-six-five interest earned. That variance is seventy-four thousand, but what that really is, is a timing, um, because in, at the end of twenty-four, there was, no, the end of, yes, the end of twenty-four, where we had some accruals for, um, some new CDs, and the timing of when, um, that interest was earned is just kind of throwing things off in the, things, so the interest is increasing, but not like it was in that first quarter. Uh, the expenditures, March thirty-one to twenty-five, three million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and one cent, or seventeen point nine six percent of the budget, as compared to a year prior, three million, five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars, ninety cents, or nineteen point nine six percent of the budget, which is a decrease of one hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-nine cents. The expenditure departments that are over twenty-five thousand variance, um, department two-twenty-eight IT is up twenty-five thousand, um, and this has to do with timing of systems replacements for, um, laptops, computers, um, there was a, there's a seven thousand dollar charge for District Court, um, that was done in the first quarter, there weren't any, um, done in the first quarter in the prior year. And then, um, the Microsoft Exchange migration that was working on, that the board approved in twenty-four, was continuing in, into twenty-five, so that was a twelve thousand dollar difference that we didn't have in the prior year. And then the other department is two-eighty-five General County, that's up thirty-nine thousand, primarily due to increased legal costs and, um, timing of some retirements and terminations of employees, so the vacation and sick payouts were higher than we had in the prior quarter. The next report is the cash summary by fund. Um, the general fund, uh, March of twenty-five, eleven million, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars, seventy-five cents, compared to the year prior, nine million, nine hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars, sixteen cents, or an increase of one million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Total cash balances, thirty-three million, six hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and ten cents, compared to the year prior of twenty-nine million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight eighty-seven, twenty-five, which is up a little over three point eight million. The third report is the quarterly fund balance report, um, as of March thirty-one, the beginning balances are unaudited, um, because the auditors haven't finished the audit yet, we're still slowly working on that. Um, and that just compares, um, where we're at, at the end of March thirty-one for your year, and, or, the quarter end fund balances. Um, I just wanted to point out to this, you can see the year-to-date revenues and the year-to-date expenditures, and if you look at the general fund and, um, you can see the revenues are one point four million, and the expenditures are three point three million. This is mainly because we don't get, um, tax revenues until July, so the first six months, we're really holding on from the prior year's taxes, so that, um, reinforces, um, one of the reasons why we have, um, try to maintain healthy fund balances, because we do have to rely on that kind of savings into the next quarter. Did anyone have any questions?
Board, any questions for the finance, could report, so...
Thanks.
I have a motion to receive and file.
I make that motion, sir.
Thank you, Steve, support?
Support.
Thank you, Dale. Will be supported, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
And Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Thank you, board, that's passed seven and all, thank you for the administrators' report, that starts on one oh six.
Yep, for our strategic planning session, uh, that'll be scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, uh, nine thirty a.m. at Audie's Restaurant in McAllen City. Uh, primary topics for discussion for the board after, uh, looking at our, um, mission vision statement, be animal control, streets regional ride, and recycling, and staff put together information prior to the meeting, and then we'll try to schedule all those, uh, big topics go first, so we can invite anybody we need to for this discussion there. Uh, for this drug park, our, uh, project's been let and awarded, the contractor has visited the site, uh, we haven't got a finite schedule yet, uh, but it's scheduled to be completed by July fifteenth, and the CCE nine-by-one interlocal agreement, um, will make communication back with Charroboy and Emmett County. Uh, we're expecting Charroboy hopefully to take action on the, the amendment there, uh, hopefully in May or early June, um, and then after, afterwards, we'll bring it to the, the board for review.
Questions for the administrator? Comments?
That was nine thirty, you said?
Yeah. I start regular.
Okay, meetings.
Yeah, regular, regular time, just different locations.
Moving on, how about a motion to receive the administration's report, I don't think we're gonna be doing it, overdoing it.
I'll make a motion to receive the administration's report.
Thank you, I'll support.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, board, we're down to ten committee reports, do we have any committee reports right now? There ain't none, the old business, just the old commissioners. Let's move on to new business, Chateau at Black Mountain Invoice Approval, one oh seven on your iPad, board.
This is an invoice in the amount of two thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, eighty-nine cents for the Veterans Spring Social that occurred on April twenty-sixth, and Commissioner Sangster will need to abstain from the vote, so the recommendation is to approve the invoice, totaling two thousand four ninety-six, eighty-nine to Chateau at Black Mountain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the invoice total of two thousand four sixty-nine, eighty-nine of Chateau.
Thank you, Steve, support.
I could that with the comment, uh, I attended that, it was very well attended, uh, by the Veterans Art Community, it was very well done by the Chateau.
Thank you for the comment.
Can I just, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
That, um, was all money that came from donations in the community, and that was not paid by any contacts or payment.
Did you have a count on how many people?
Well, about a little over a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, just over a hundred.
It was a one fifty-three.
Yeah.
That's, that's good.
Basically, do I have porcelain, is that a compliment to the community?
Union is great for supporting veterans, and for a lot of people that are in need, yeah. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
abstained.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
You bet.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion's carried seven and all. Professional consulting services. Down to B.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Uh, the Countywide Central Services Monthly Forty Billings, um, MGT Impact Solutions, which used to be MGT of America, they've been doing this for several years, and, um, the agreements expire September thirty, twenty twenty-five. Um, they've requested, um, a three-year agreement, and they keep their prices the same, and they hadn't, and, they hadn't increased it in, I think, a couple of their, um, agreements, so they've requested to increase the monthly billing services at a cost of nine thousand annually for front of the court, and nine thousand annually for the prosecutor's office, and then an additional two dollars per timesheet, and this compared to, the current, current agreement is seven thousand per year and a dollar forty per timesheet. Um, the recommendation, and there's two motions, one for the front of the court and one for, um, the prosecutor's office, is to, um, uh, award the three-year consulting services, um, at twenty-seven thousand total, plus two dollars per timesheet process, to provide the monthly forty billings to the front of the court, and authorize the chairperson to sign, subject to any final legal review, but the agreement is pretty much the same, so I'm not sure there will be legal review.
We can do both in one motion.
Yep.
Who will make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Carrying both of those?
Yes, for the prosecutor, front of the court, to MGT of America.
Thank you, Rich, who will support?
I'll, I'll support it.
Thank you, Tom. Moved and supported, in discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion's carried, boards, seven and all. Uh, we're down to C, twelve C, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Administrative Services Contract.
This is our yearly renewal for Blue Cross Blue Shield for administrative service contract related to the jail for inmate coverage. My recommendation is, uh, for approval of the agreement, you know, from seven, one twenty-five to six thirty, twenty-six.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve this presentation.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, move and support. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, carried seven and all. Under D, twelve D, possession director employment agreement renewal for Elizabeth Zavick, that's one forty-six on your iPad.
This is our three-year renewal with our requisition director, uh, what does he have?
Mr. Chair, I just got the comment that I'm proud to make the motion that we should accept this test person. Just wanna find a job for us in the county. I'll support that.
Thank you, move and support. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
You know, just a comment, we're really fortunate to have the people we have here in this county, and I'll tell you, we have some great employees. It's wonderful. We're down to E, twelve E, MIDC Assigned Counsel Employment Agreement, Gretchen Elliott, that's one fifty-three on your iPad.
For Engine Defense Managesign Council, uh, we entered, or had two applications, uh, interviewed Ms. Elliott there, uh, she used to be an employee, of course, in the District Court as her magistrate, uh, she went to law school, finished that, uh, went out in the private sector a little bit, and we were fortunate for her to be available to come back and interested in the position here. So, our recommendation is, uh, approve employment agreement with Gretchen Elizabeth Elliott for Engine Defense Design Council, authorize the chairperson to sign.
To your board?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Dale?
I'll support.
Thank you, Jeff, moved and supported, any further discussing? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ossman?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Thank you, board, that's carried seven and all, what kind of agreement, board.
Elizabeth, uh, did a lot of hard work and got her law degree, kudos, sir.
Yeah, that's great, that's a good accomplishment. We're down to T, Resolution X.
Um, staff is requesting adding a bike fee for streets regional ride for a dollar for each way. Um, the recommendation is to adapt Amendment One to the twenty twenty-five fee resolution, number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, to become effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, authorize the chairperson to sign, and authorize the finance director to make any necessary budget adjustments.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
But we haven't increased any fees in a long time, man.
Don't they charge fifty cents?
They, they do, but somehow it was never on the fee resolution.
To your board?
Have we got?
I, I...
Support.
I'll support, Richard.
I made a motion, you support it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Clermont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wa- Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, Board, seven and all, again, we're down to twelve G, twenty twenty-five Salary and Waives Resolution, Non-Union General Employees, that's twenty-four dash twenty-six, Amendment Number Two.
Steph?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Jumped in.
Well, that's fine.
Steph is requesting to amend the salary of the Assistant Prosecutor Number Two position from eighty-three thousand, one forty-eight, to a range of eighty-three one, eighty-three thousand, one forty-eight, to eighty, eight thousand, two thirty-three for recruitment and market adjustments. And this would increase, uh, financial impact up to five thousand, eighty-five dollars in the original twenty twenty-five budget, plus applicable fringe benefits. And the recommendation is to adopt Amendment Number Two to the twenty twenty-five salary resolution. Non-Union General Employees, that makes the above change to be effective May thirteen, twenty twenty-five, authorize the finance director to make the necessary budget adjustments, and authorize the chair to sign.
So could you just, uh, tell me what the, uh, the other, the chief?
League, um, the, the number one trustee is at ninety-eight.
Do you think you have any other question?
I guess I'd like clarification, it's a range of eighty-three thousand to eighty-eight, it's a five thousand dollar range, um, for recruitment and marketing adjustments, can you explain what that means? Yeah, we've, we've been advertising for this position for about eight months, and we have a candidate that's interviewed that we're recruiting from another municipality, and, uh, this, this adjustment requires that for us to secure them, so.
Thank you. That sounds very.
Thank you. Yes.
And my assumption is that that is comparable with the other counties in the area?
In today's world, yes. So it's, it's on the move, kind of continuously, there's, um, many counties recruiting for, uh, these types of attorney positions, and so the, the range is, uh, in movement as we speak, because this person has, uh, the top in experience, probably fifteen years plus, so we need to, uh.
That's kind of a switch, you know, we, for a long time, Spoygen County has trained them, got them going, and some other county stole them.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dale. Support.
I'll support.
Thank you, Mike, moved and supported. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Turn order of police union contract under H, Road Patrol, one sixty-four.
This is our FOP Road Patrol Union Contract. You can see the concerns for wage increase, we have, uh, four percent year one, two, and three, with addition of a fourth year step in the agreement. Uh, refer to pay to twenty twenty-five, and you can see the, the language changes within the agreement. And recommendations for approval, the FOP agreements, uh, effective January first, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the board chair and, and, or design, or chair design, and authorize any necessary budget adjustments.
This is negotiated, so.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll support.
Thank you, Mike, moved and supported. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
We're down to twelve I, Emergency Watershed Grant Approval. One sixty-four.
Hand it out for the board, uh, the Drain Commissioner has met with, uh, USDA officials, uh, based out of Prescott County. Uh, when we met with FEMA a few weeks ago, he talked about debris removal costs, and one of the discussion was debris removal within watershed areas. And Drain Commissioner set up a meeting, uh, with USDA, and we also had program township there. Uh, Innes was notified, uh, but couldn't make it to the meeting, and the citizenship working was there. So the, under the USDA program, uh, there is a grant program, we have a sixty-day window, which were approximately about thirty days within that window to apply, uh, for possible funding to remove any debris from the watershed. And primarily, this discussion was for the Little Black area, uh, hadn't been able to talk to the Drain Commissioner since our meeting about any other particular drain areas, uh, around the city of Spoygen. Uh, we did review a little bit, discuss, uh, other river areas that are under, uh, DNR's control, of course, uh, for any head removal. Uh, we didn't get any specific reports back in the, um, primary watersheds that, um, there was any, any need to remove, you know, debris in a, in a mass amount, I think, uh, under the fishery laws and other things that you have, have to get the permits, and then I think they have, uh, volunteers who are trying to get together to, to remove certain areas along kayaking or canoeing routes within, within the county. So this, uh, particular watershed, um, Little Black, uh, there's four structures that were built with USDA funds approximately nineteen sixty-two, and, um, those structures are earth and dam, um, up, the upstream portion and the downstream portion, uh, the USDA person that walked with the Drain Commissioner and identified enough debris that, uh, they recommend that he at least, uh, file this notice from Penn letter to request for a review, um, and that's what we're, we're looking at here today, um, with, with a letter that's attached in, in the motion here. This motion proves that short income Drain Commissioner, under a county administrator, will submit a letter to USDA requesting grant funding to the emergency watershed protection program. And once this is sent in, this would, uh, trigger staff from USDA to be able to come out to the watershed, do, uh, more of an evaluation and, and a review, and then from there, if it's, uh, uh, looks like it's awarded, then you go next to preliminary engineering, engineering of the project, and ultimately, uh, if funding was, uh, awarded, uh, then the projects to remove any debris in the areas identified would carry out. As far as funding splits, this, uh, USDA program provides seventy-five percent funding, uh, there was general discussion between the units, um, of splitting the remaining twenty-five percent, of course, that happened to be, uh, each board, uh, to give kind of ballpark, I, I don't know what a project cost would be, but if, if it's a half million, um, project, that's probably around thirty thousand per unit, and if it's a million dollar project, it'd be seventy-four, seventy-five thousand. Um, as far as Hebron Township, uh, we didn't talk a lot yet to Hebron Township, most of the, the watershed in that area uh, leads into the Indian Marsh area, and so I'm not sure how accessible that could be at the end of the day, that's, that's still kind of under review. And so that's the, uh, review of the program, and again, looking for authorization to, to submit the, this letter to Penn.
Much pleasure, Board. It's an opportunity to really do something.
Yeah, we've worked on this for years, and this is the first time that's, there's a potential for at least seventy-five percent, so I'd make a motion that we go through this.
Thank you, what, what, what kind of resolution would be?
Yeah, this, this, this is just a motion to approve, uh, Drain Commissioner Administrator to submit the letter.
For the emergency watershed grant approval. Yeah, I'll make that.
I'll support it.
All right, thank you.
Just want to make a, a comment, um, the dams that, um, Mr. Lawson was referring to, they were put in nineteen sixty-two, and they have a fifty-year life, so they've been in there sixty-three years, so. It's, it's, it's almost, it's a critical time that those dams get replaced, it's, it's in a very serious condition.
That subject comes up almost every year.
That, that, this will not do that.
No, it's just.
No, 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 no.
It's the preparation part.
Yes, yeah.
But fixing up all the approach to it will be a big start, yeah.
You gotta be able to get to it, you know, so, there's a lot of stuff in the way. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
You bet.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Thank you, Board, that's carried seven and all, we finally get something going. We're down to the added, ten nine, twelve J, as you can see, plenty of grant regarding the generator, uh, here.
Yes, this is a resolution, uh, twenty-five oh seven, for Michigan Strategic Fund, uh, CDPG Urban Needs, uh, Generator Grant Program. Uh, at previous meeting, the board approved the staff to submit the application, uh, because these are CDPG funds, the CDPG rules require a resolution be approved by the board commissioners also, and our recommendation is to approve Resolution twenty-five oh seven, and authorize the board, uh, chair to sign.
I'll make that motion, Mister Chair.
Dale, support. Thank you, Mike. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Osmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Thank you, Board, seven and all. Okay, completes, we've been, we've moved, we're down to thirteen board matters for discussion. What do we have, other than the, uh, planning session coming up at Audi's, just to keep us on, over to that? Anything coming up? Citizen comments? Anybody have anything they want to say to the board? Board member comments? If you discovered that, yeah.
I do have one issue for comment, uh, I attended Kohler Township, uh, meeting last night, and one of the trustees, I believe, uh, brought up the question about, uh, I know the county does it because I signed up myself, uh, and this is mainly for Madam Clerk, uh, the property fraud and murder, uh, that, uh, Clerk's office is doing now, where they can enroll in it, and, uh, Karen, she asked, uh, if maybe something could be put out to the public? Karen, where they, you can call in and you put on the, one of your deputies there puts it on a, a word list. Uh, I know I did it, uh, you just call your office, and, uh, I can't remember the young lady's name, but oversees that for you, but, uh, I called in, told her my name, told her my address, and, uh, within minutes, I mean, oh, it took a couple minutes, and within minutes, I got an email saying you're signing up, so. But that was brought up at the township meetings, I told them my address.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. So we're gonna go into a closed session now. So we ask the public to remove themselves?